sila sa kalakaran so that's the main problem natin nakikita to discuss today so yung kinatawag nating sino bang magmumonitor 'yung presentation mo kanina monitoring to the barangay sino ba ang iassignyo to monitor para magreport? wala?
supusidly sir, lahat ng lahat ng mga tao kailangan natin 'yung tulong nila na magmonitor pero sa sitwision natin, yun kailangan natin magcreate 'yung task force sir
okay, we will focus on Mati sir, dito as Mati
yes
may na identify ba kayo na mga area parang merong talagang kalakaran ng droga? ako meron sir, sasabihin ko sa inyo mamaya, ikaw Aspedia meron ba?
yes sir, meron sir
meron na, so anong ginawa niyo doon?
yun ang ano namin sir, na imonitor kung sino 'yung source, sino 'yung mga dinisiputan ng source kailangan kasi namin 'yung malaki 'yung kunin namin to stop the distribution
kunin 'yung malaki, 'yung maliliit, maliit dito, maliit di on, maliit, maliit with the total of malaki pa rin yun, di ba? so I think maliit man or malaki, we will establish for the control of that, no sir? hindi tayo magkaaway sir, magtutulungan tayo because this is a very serious ah problem in our society that cause damages sa ating mga kabataan and wala tayong ibang masandigan kondili ang Pedia as Philippine Drug Enforcement Agency but as I observe, maganda talaga, di ba? but in terms of budget, wala pala, ano bang ginawa ng National Pedia? wala lang, hindi ba kayo naglalobby into the congress or whatsoever? they present the problem that we need a big budget to resolve the drug problem in our society? meron ba kayong ginawa ganyan?
sa higher officer, ginagawa naman nila 'yung ano necessary na dapat gawin
yeah
however, hindi man natin ma- please, siguro
okay
kaya dependable lang talaga kami sa kung anong
kung araw nandyan, oo, hindi din kayo masisisi, kaya ano ang nandyan, yun lang ang antingan but now we will get serious on this because si Mayor Mayo Almario, ah serioso serioso sa kanyang administration na talagang sumpuin ang drugs so what is your recommendation para matulungan naman namin dito sa council na magawa namin ng iba pang pamaraan para to uplift the quality of your service being a Drug Enforcement Department and by the help of our local government in the city of Mati? meron ba kang, meron ba kayong strategic plan for that?
yes sir, we are planning to propose a a additional help or additional budget from the local government sir para yun, kailangan talaga natin na magkaroon ng reward system sir
especially 'yung reward system, di ba? mag-ooffer tayo ng reward system, as a matter of fact, wala pala tayong enough money so may tendisi diyan kung mag-ooffer ang drug lord, doon ako sa drug lord, na to the Pedia
yes sir
di ba? so it's a big competition between the drug lord and the Pedia, it might be ang problema kasi natin dito, I observe, minsan matatalo tayo sa pera malaki ang pera sa magde-deal ka, kaysa magre-report ako doon sa Pedia second, matatakot din ang civilian na magsabi na sila mag-inform to the Pedia because they have no enough protection for them, so yun ang problema natin kung paano natin ma-reserve yan
yes sir
so yun lang ang aking suggestion and sometime question and thank you sir for your effort this afternoon thank you Honorable Antupesto, thank you sir, Honorable Alcantara, Honorable Valera
thank you, good afternoon Honorable Presiding Officer
good afternoon
and I would like also to greet, good afternoon to our intelligence agent for, five, Sir Glenn U. Carlos from the Pedia, sir, good afternoon so I'm not questioning about kakayahan of Pedia because I believe Pedia is created by the national, no? then well in fact, I observed the Pedia, even the social media and the news or TV malaki ang nitutulong ninyo, ang tagawa ninyo na in terms of illegal drugs and I believe the Pedia is not connected or not protector of any drugs indicate in our country, sir, correct?
yes sir
ah, may few question so as a provincial officer of this Pedia and province of Davao-Rental, I would like to, I would you evaluate o current situation of illegal drugs operation in the province of Davao-Rental as a whole?
based on the, our, in my stay in this province sir wala namang ano problema with regards, ano patuloy namang manageable 'yung sitwision natin kasi may karoon ng collaboration between other law enforcement units na kami nagtutulungan para ma-monitor talaga ang ating, ano sir, ang sitwision ng droga sa ating probinsya particularly 'yung mga exchange of information ah kung meron silang kailangan na information, pinoprobate naman namin at the same time, kung meron kaming kailangan na information sa mga, sa mga targets na na maprobate nila, yun sir, tapos nag-me-merge kami, may mga ano ah joint operation na kinakandak which is successfully na negate naman namin, na na accomplish naman namin sir
sir, and also dear, pabor ka ba sa akin sir, if I ask you na 'yung illegal drugs is not came first o galing sa barangay? before sa, nabigay sa mga community, lalo na sa mga users? ah pabor ka ba na ang illegal drugs like shabo or shabo na hindi galing unang-una sa barangay?
hindi sir
yeah, tama ko, tama ba ko sir? so meaning, parang pangalawa ko ng tanong, when I was sa punong barangay, tanong ko din sa Pedia ito ah sabi ko, ah meron ba tayo, based ating intelligence report, may shabo ba laboratory in Davao-Rental, sir? wala?
wala sir, sa monitor namin sa whole region, sir, wala, wala nangyaring laboratory na ano
so hindi nagaling sa barangay, lalo na wala din na as per sa report, wala ding laboratory in Davao-Rental, especially in Mati so meaning, sa kalsada talaga galing ang illegal drugs, ang shabo, sir, tama ba?
yes sir, moron, ano sir
so kung sa kalsada, dapat, may magbabantay sa kalsada, no? yun ang bakit makapasok sa Mati na hindi namang galing sa barangay, wala namang laboratory in Davao-Rental and also in Mati, no? so yun ang dapat makikita nila then, ah sa inyo palagi, sir, what is nowadays status of, especially in Mati, when in terms of illegal drugs? Mati alone?
sa Mati alone, sir, may, meron talagang ano, di naman lang sa Mati sa, sa whole country as a whole, ano, meron talagang resurgence, ano sir yung sa paggamit ng droga, lalo na lalo na 'yung pagkawala ni Pierre Ardi nagbalikan talaga, sir, 'yung mga, 'yung mga nag-susurrender bumalik talaga sa paggamit, sir
tama, sir, so in your statistic and Pedia as a head, ah are we now considered that the drug spree in Davao, ah province of Davao-Rental or the city ang kanya, status niya sa atong drug spree karoon medyo nawala na
proseso kasi, sir, na dapat talaga, i-clear muna natin 'yung barangay ah before tayo mag-apply as a drug cleared city, sir may proseso, kailangan talaga natin i-daan sa tamang proseso kasi 'yung balik na, balik ng ano, sir, sayang ang effort, sir
with the operation by Pedia, because Pedia is always there enforce to apprehend the suspect or whatever na nandyan sa Waran to Bares in terms of related by drugs, so may coordination kayo, sir, with the cadac or the padac provincial? so nakikita natin doon 'yung status, ay status na mga barangay na, na drugs, sir, drugs cleared and the drug spree, no? then biglang bumalik, lalo na 'yung mga personnel na negative noon sa, sa drug test
yes sir
so meron din kayo mga kopian yan, sir?
meron, sir
okay, so ah meron bang ginagawa ang Pedia not only to apprehend the by the suspect or any yang dyan sa Waran to Bares na magiging gumawa kayo to make or to do ah drive and information encouraging, discouraging the, the drug users?
'yung mga continuous na ano natin, sir, 'yung sa mga, sa kabataan natin, sir sa mga particularly 'yung mga lectures, awareness na mga seminars
yes sir, sino kasama niyo dyan, kung mga ginagawa niyan, may involvement ba ng Department of Social and Development? or the PNP, or the barangay official, or the city official, or sa cadac?
usually, sir, ang kasama namin, sir, is 'yung cadac, sir, sa pag ano, pag ah
meron ba tayong ano, sir, 'yung isumbong mo kay Pedia, 'yung parang hotlines natin kaysa sometimes, may mga gusto kong magsumbong pero takot sila mag-witness, baka babalikan na mga drug lord or sa mga, ah 'yung, lalo na 'yung sinasumbong nila, meron ba tayong ginagawa niyan?
so as such, sir, may gumawa kami na ano, na pinopost namin sa mga host, hostlen, coastal barangay, sir
sir, baka pwede malagyan, na isumbong mo kay Pedia, tapos malaking call zero nine zero one na hotline number para 'yung mga pwede magkasumbong, not personally to magpunta to go your office so hindi na sila matakot siguro, para mabalid it din, na really na sila ay i-accuse na kaagad, sir, no? so isa na lang, pag ang shabo, halimbawa pag barato, mura ang presyo niya, what to understand that, sir? paano natin maano yan, kung barato ang presyo ng shabo, dito, dito, halimbawa sa
based ano, sir, ah yun, sir, ah with in terms sa lo, ano
kung mura ang, mura ang presyo ng shabo sa bilhan, ano ang understand natin dyan?
kung mura, sir, is maraming supply
maraming supply, so kung mahal, minus ang supply so ngayon, sir, ano sa tingin mo ang Mati as a, sa iyong evaluation? mura ba ang shabo ngayon o barato at magkano kaya?
medyo mahal ngayon, sir, at sa twelve thousand per gram
so meaning, mahina ang supply?
di naman necessary na mahina, sir, pero control 'yung ano, ng supply, sir
sana mahina, mahina, sir, para mag-congrats na ako, thank you very much, that's all my questions, sir Glenn, thank you
thank you Honorable Valera
thank you sir
Honorable Rabat?
thank you Mister Chair ah good afternoon sa atong tanan okay, and also Sir Glenn, good afternoon
good afternoon, sir
ah first and foremost, I would like to extend my thank you sa inyong agency for keeping our streets clean kabalu na ako, nakita ko sa inyong slides na your situation is very ah mahirap, nakita ko 'yung mga ano niyo kulang so I would like to thank you from the bottom of my heart for always keeping your ah passion and your capabilities to keep our streets clean, so sir, thank you so much ang akong pangunta na, sir, what is the average age na gumagamit na mga shabo, mga drugs? average age sa inyong information?
based on the information, sir, and mga apprehended drug personalities as, ano, sir, as early as fourteen, fifteen?
fourteen years old?
yes sir
yun 'yung average, ah hindi, yun 'yung pinakabata?
pinakabata, sir
on fourteen to, let's say forty years old, sir?
yun ang usual na
yun 'yung ano niyo? wow so on, yun 'yung usual age bracket niyo sir, so my question is ngayon, sir, what do you suggest that we do as a community? to help prevent this from growing, kasi from last I heard is it true that nag-iincrease tayo per year na 'yung gumagamit ng drugs?
yes sir
by how many percent, if you don't mind me asking, sir? from last year?
sige, from last year, sir sa, based on sa, ano, sir, mga seizures and arrested, ano, may mga almost two hundred percent, sir, increase from last year
so I think our viewers and for, and the entire Mati will actually agree when I say this that is a very extreme jump, especially with inflation that is happening instead of magpalit sila ng mga sudan, ng mga milk, gatas, magpalit na lang sila mga droga so what do you suggest that we do as a community, sir? so we can help prevent this percentage from increasing?
ang talagang solution, sir, is magsisimula sa, ang monitoring sa barangay that is the, our, nakikita natin na solusyon, kasi di namin kaya, sir we, we alone, tsaka 'yung PNP, hindi namin kaya
so you need help sa mga barangay, sa mga puruk?
yun talaga, sir, yung, ang komunidad talaga ang dapat na
pero mismo, sir, sa isang user what do you would like to tell the user mismo? how do you prevent yourself from using drugs?
yun, ano, sir, ah i-integrate natin always na 'yung ill effects ng paggamit ng illegal na droga, sir 'yung nasisira 'yung system, nasisira 'yung ano natin, pag-iisip na maggawa na tayo ng, hindi dapat gawin, 'yung, gumagawa na tayo ng mga krimen
pero ano 'yung reason daw, sir, why are they using drugs ngayon? kasi nalaman ko mga heartache, heartache daw eh
yun, sir, ah meron mga factors na, ano, sir, pero doon sa 'yung mga ano, mostly, ang sinasabi ng mga mahuli natin is family problems, sir yun ang ano nila problema sa pamilya, sa kahirapan, allegedly sa kahirapan sa, yun, lahat ng factors, sir
pagpalipas oras, then, no?
walang trabaho, additional, as, ah sinasabi ng iba pangextend nila sa trabaho, lalong-lalo na 'yung mga nasa mining atsaka 'yung mga drivers natin yun ang rason nila, sir, na gumagamit sila to extend their, ah work
sir, thank you so much for that, ah very enlightening statements and um I would like to also tell you, sir, that this august body is always here to support and help whatever the Pedia needs and 'yung mga kailangan niyo so thank you, sir, thank you, sir, thank you, Mister Chair
thank you Honorable Rabat, are there any more questions from the members? Honorable Alcantara
thank you, Vice, ah good afternoon to everyone, Sir Carlos, good afternoon
good afternoon, sir
ah gusto lang na ako ipaabot ang ako ang amuang na kong pagpasalamat sa imuhang pag-attend and paghatag sa dayta ng gikan mismo sa inyong opisina ah na makatabang, pod sa katauhan nga mahibalo sa unsay sitwasyon sa atong siyudad may tungod sa, ah drug concerns and ikaduha, Sir Carlos, ah kunaa may mga legislative action na kinahanglan namo, na pwede namong ikatabang o ikasuporna sa inyong departamento sa Pedia andam kaayó ang ako ang kaubanan ang akong colleague na mao ang amuang Committee on Peace and Order, which is Honorable Bardon andam giyakayó kauban ang sanggunyang pang lungsod na muhatag o action may tungod na na dagang salamat, og madayon na hapon
thank you so much, sir
thank you Honorable Alcantara, Honorable Pang followed by Honorable Bardon
good afternoon Mister Chair, good afternoon Sir Glenn Carlos from Pedia
good afternoon, sir
ah, nami question with regards sa mga private sector ah clarify lang namo, sir, legal ba giyod na magconduct o random drug testing ang mga private establishments sa ilaha mga employees?
um, legal siya, sir, kung nag-implement ang city or ang province sa drug-free workplace program, sir, which is, I mean, ah nag-submit, nag- create a resolution or ordinance or something na to implement that program, sir, drug-free workplace program, sir
okay, so if, if the, the private establishment will require ah drug test result before hiring, pwede ba na?
pwede siya, sir, pwede
okay
just to prove na malinis 'yung applicant natin or 'yung ah trabahan din natin, wala siya sa paggamit ng droga, sir
okay, noted, sir, because ah we have already talked with Arcadac Head, Sir Danilo Mendoza ah we are proposing a encouraging our establishment to conduct drug test ah at least twice a year, so encourage na to, so una ang ginaplanuhan na encourage na to sila na magconduct o drug test after, ah na, sir, unsay process, for example, nag-drug test ng isa ka establishment, tapos na ay nag-positive, unsay next process buhaton sa, ah establishment, sa iyang employee amo bang i-turn over or itawag ba sa inyuha?
ah, with in terms sa, ganang mga namang positive, sir usually, ang ginatagaan namo one is 'yung, 'yung company or the office or the the person in authority na nag-hire ato na tao wala may kuwan, ah, wala may braxan, implementing rules sa nangamukhang wala man siya nag, wala hiprobable cause na nakpunsya kaya, ganang, tawagan eh, um, wala siya sa aktol crime na wala siya aktol crime na gibuhat, sir
okay
so ano lang niya, submit niya 'yung sarili sa katungang office or sa katunga na office head so ang mag-reprimand na tunga tao is the, the company or the employer, sir
so I think, sir, we will have a puhon pag once ma-finalize na namo ang resolution ah I think we will have to conduct a committee hearing para maklaro na to ang proseso kung saan pag-process sa mga establishment sa katungang employees na mag-positive no, kedy late lang man about pag-aprehend sa ilaha, but also tagaan sila chance na ipasulod sa mga something na ah marehab sila or on sobra ng mga program na makapaayó balik sa ilaha so that's all, Mister Chair, thank you, sir, may hapon sa tanan
papalapit, sir, ang ano, manggud sa ano, sir, ah usually, pag nasa, ang company mag-implement ng drug test magfollow sa, unsay iyang rules or implementing guidelines sa company, alun, na kung mag-positive ang, sa unsay, unsay mga unsay mga buhaton or mga ano na kailangan ba i-tanggalon siya or mismo or taga, ah tagaan siya chance na maparehab siya ano ang proseso, proseso, sir, na mag magkuwan giyta sa, magdepende giyta sa implementing rules sa company or sa office na nag, nagconduct sa, sa drug test, sir
okay, noted, so ang atua is kung naamantay mga suggestion, puhon sa tuang mga employer, kung saan pag-process sa katungang nag-positive, I think ato lang ihanay para at is once atuwa na silang i-encourage na mag-drug test, so at is kabilu na sila sa process na to kung unsay mga options na mga kapamaayó sa katungang nag-positive sa droga, no? so kanal lang siguro, sir, dagang salamat
salamat po, sir
thank you, Mister Chair
thank you Honorable Pang, Honorable Bardon
okay, ah mayong hapon sa tanan, especially to our invited guest, Sir Glenn, no?
may hapon, sir
ah unang-una, sir, as Committee on Peace and Order ah dakko kayo akong kalipay pagpasalamat sa imong presinta karoon arun pod ka among mahimamat, no? ah isip Committee sa Peace and Order as your partner, no? ah unang-una, ah before kumu-padayon, I would like to kung natulip ng adin mura three weeks ago, mura motong na hinatabo nga na dakpan giyod ang taga makambol no, salamat kaayó, og, ah nalipay ko tungod kay ah sa imong gingon nga, ang kasagaran karoon, katungang barangais nga ah drug cleared, but sa pagkakaroon hinay-hinay na giyod nga na malik ugane katungang mga sorindiri, ubay-ubay ganito, even sa among barangay, sa barangay mamali dagan-dagan gitu sila, pero sa among, based sa among monitoring ah mura kasagaran na malik na pod, ah ang una na kung kuwan, sir, kanu sa lang giyod ka na assign diri sa Mati City, ah sa atong provincial
ah last July twenty twenty-three, sir
twenty twenty-three
yes, sir
ah naku, ano ba ni mo, sir, ang tanan nga mga barangais na nalibot na ba ni mo, na ano ba kay mga kontak person dito? sa tanan barangais, di ba kabet ni mo ang one na diti diti barangais, tama ba?
yes, sir
so sa tanan ba nga barangais na ano ba kay mga kontak person?
nami kontak sa ubang barangais, sir, ubang na nga barangay nga nabisitan ako, sir
ah, okay, sir, ingon na ni manggud, sir, sa based on your presentation na sa inyong hang kuwan dia is mga naarmo sa mga napulo kabuo
yes, sir
so kunan tungtan aon, dilig giyod kaya, sakadako sa isko nga inyong hang gina atiban but ah dilig giyod kamaglisod, sir, tungod kay isip punong barangay sa, from two thousand thirteen up to twenty twenty-four ah base sa akong na ibauan o sa, ah kasinapian o sa akong naibawan, be, be forma drug cleared ang usak barangay na agin na siya isip o kuwan katungang badak, si badak barangay Anti-Drug Abuse Council ngadiin maui kanunay nag-monitor ngat to sa kapurukan kedy dun agin mi gi-assigned dito na monitoring in every purux nga maui mukha na to mga illegal drugs activities din kan'to mga barangay Anti-Drug Abuse Council mauna to siya ang muhatag o report ngat to sa punong barangay din ang punong barangay na pod, mauna pod ang muhatag o report direct sa atong kapusan or sa Pedia so from time to time, even gamayramo pero kung dun na namui access sa matag barangais, dun na namui ah kontak dito sa, even sa mga barangay captains lang, sir, na number pwede na na, sir, kay dun namampui ah report ang amuang mga badak monthly dunay, dunay gi-pahigayon nga meetings din i-gather namo dito ang tanan nga mga one, report nila bahin sa mga illegal nga mga activities so dalik na kaayó pag kuwan, bisan pa man ugamayramo ang ako alang dia kay problema ninyo, even sa inyong mga, ah rescue, rescue equipment, kulang mo, so maglisod giyod giyapun kay initayin ba, sir, kung pananglitan, sir, na ay amuang na, na inagreport sa amua na dunay activity dia unya manawag ni maka kuwan ba mo dayon, pananglitan?
yes, sir
Yes, sir.
Kay dun namanggud, as Committee sa Pisan Order, sir, as punong barangay, na ipanahon, sir, nga manawag sa ako ah, during the time na kapitan pa ko, manawag sa ako ah, nga kap, even sa akong mga tanud, kay isa mapuna sila na gamonitor, na manawag sa ako ah, nga kapning balayan na ay nagkuwan dito, na ay nag-sisyon, kaya tawagan na nilang, oh, sisyon na oh. Tapos, ang maglisod manggud misa'ong nagkontak, sir, katung dilig pa ikaw, sir. Kay kasagaran manawag po kanang deep pod at kabirid pod, motong ah, amo ang alang untang kuwanan sa mga deepats, magabot po na po dito, kay duwe na lagi, murag, naka, napun siguro'y nakahiring na muna, na na ay nagpadulong ah kuwan, manibat na dayon. Pero ang mindut kiluntan na, sir, initaim ba na, na ay manawag na ay nag-sisyon diri, or mapoint dyan namo na kanak na balay, maod dyan ay ilahan sisyonanan? Uh, pwidi ba nga kanang, na ay mga quick response dyan, sir, bakum panahon nga, na ay gusto na'to nga nakpon?
Pwede, ma'am, sir.
Makalaon ba mi anak, sir? Kay ako, sir, isip Committee sa Pisan Order, andam dyan ko kanunay musukurta mo tabang ko, sabisan unsa'ng urasa nga, karoon pod ato may nayan na usumpo ang kanak na mga activities. O, sa panahon pod, sir, sa kagabi yon, kay momo na'y lisod dyan kay kasagaran, gabi imangdyan.
Yes, sir.
Unya, kung sa'ong na nyo pag-ispondi nga, pananglitan, naabamo'y mga, sa pagkakaroon, sir, naabay sa kenan, initaim nga magamit ninyo?
Naamantay sa kenan, sir, magamit, pero ang atua lang kay nag-iisang, kuwan lang dyan, sir.
Isara?
Oh, kung matay mga makita ngalain, so di na ginatso na ma'tuwan tong, mababana na atay irespondihan pod na una. Parira pod sa ano na'to, sir, nga, medium limited, dyan ang ato ang ano.
Ang kuwan lang dyan ane dya ay na, court communication na lang dyan,
Yes, sir.
In every barangays din, matagan na lang dyan siguro pod uwan ang matag barangay na kanang pag, kuwan na, pag sikop kumpanang litado.
Uh, ano manggud, sir, initially, nagka, nagkahistoriami ni with, uh, Colonel Mendoza, ni Kada, then the, the new, uh, Chief of Police, na magcreate me ukanang bragsilbi, quick kanang, kanang mga plano na kailangan ma- ma- marispondihan na'to ang mga concerns, labina sa illegal drugs, sir. Kay, ang mga plano, analagi nga, kung na-nami mga na ay mag-receive na mga impormasyon or tawag, pwede namo i-relay kay, kay, kay COP para kuwan kay mas daghan mangdyan sila, sir. Pwede namo tabangan bang ang ato ang pag-monitoring sa, sa suyad? Kung kailangan nga magpadalag representative, ikan sa PIDEA, ang padala ko, sir, uguan. Pero actually, sir, may, na ako'y naka-assigned na mga, na, na agent nga nagatutok sa mga barangays. Misses, ginatawag na barangay drug clearing officer. Motos siya ang naikontak sa tanang mga kapitans, sa mga, kung kisa'tong mga action officer sa badak, action sa officer sa madak, siya ang in charge na, sir. So, naagin communication na, nitabo.
So, sa pagkakaroon, naanagid mo'y, simple, sir, identify mangdyan ang dilig magtanang barangay.
Yes, sir.
Identify daman na'to unsa'to mga barangay na naagid ang mga kanak nga mga activities. So, naanamoy naka-assigned anak na tao na, murag, kanabang, maod dito siya na giasain nga kanang, kanak nga barangay, ikaw din ha, pa initaim, from time to time na na ay manawag na maka respondi dayon, sir, kay pananglitan, kung na ay nakpon o dilig, ina'to madakpan diapun kung wala inyong presinta.
Uh, dilig.
Murag, di mangdyan pwidi na ang tanud lang uguan ang mo.
Honorable Bordon.
Kamu mangdyan.
Ang mo, sir, wala mi nag-a-assigned ukanang specific nga, kung i, i, kininga barangay, ikaw dera, kay tungod lagi sa kakulangon sa personnel. Ang amo lang ginabuhat, kung kisa'tong duty, na inaming duty sa office, siya ang murili uguan, uh, information nga na ay magparisponde. So, mo kuwan sa'ko ah, mo inform sa'ko ah, the same dim, ako na, ako na podang mag-disseminate sa information. Kung kisa'ong ipadala or maki-coordinate po ko sa nearest, uh, station or nearest, uh, um, kanang, sa nagtawag nila, ane, uh, bi, kanang, pulis sa, pulis sa barangay?
Bab, deepats.
O, uh, deepats. Ako na ay mo kuwan, sir.
So, okay, sir, no, uh, kanal lang, as Committee on Pisan Order, uh, ako nalang ikuwan nga mapakus dyan ina'to ang kuwan sa matag barangays. Oh, dagan kayang salamat, sir, ayok nga, uh, initaim, uh, pwidi dyan ka namong makontak, magkalaupod ka, sir, sa amo ang supporta.
Yes, sir.
Kaoban sa akong, uh, umay, kaoban sa City Council, so dagan salamat umay napun.
Looking forward for the sameong kuwan, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Bordon. Are there any more questions from the members? Honorable Campos.
Mr. Chair, this will just be very quick. Um, sir, as Chairman of Education, Daria sa Mati po, sir, when was the last time na nagconduct ang mga symposiums and the meetings para sa mga youth na'to, sir, sa mga eskwelahan?
Um, always man mi nag-aano, ma'am, nag-a respond, every time nga na ay mag request, ma'am. Kay, nag-aano lang pod mi ma'am sa request, kay tungod napu'la other functions tong nagkakandak og, uh, lectures.
Yes, sir.
And other mga.
Kanas aba mga last na nakalektur ta, sir, last update?
Last month, ma'am.
Last month, okay. Other reason why I ask, sir, kay, as Chairman of Education, we are targeting to have drug-free schools and have a safer environment para sa atong mga batanon. Kay lagi, kung naasabalay, mabantayan man na'to mga ginikanan ang bata, pero pag naasaskwelahan, wala ta kabalo kung unsa ang mga dangers na nag-alark sa atong mga anak diadto. And with that, sir, if it's okay with you, we would like to partner with the Committee on Education, sir, and the City Anti-Drug Abuse Council as well, na hand-in-hand magtinabangayta to conduct symposiums and meetings sa school. Kay from time to time, nagachange man ang mga bata mo graduate tong uban, na napu'yo mo puli pagka next year. And unta, sir, uh, karoon nga this time, kung pwede, kaya na'to malibot tanan schools within Mati City and briefing, and not only sa PIDEA, kay provincial level man mo, but also our City Anti-Drug Abuse Council, mo ang among gitar get karoon together with the PTA maupod ang hangyo sa mga ginikanan, sir. Kay whether we like it or not, daghan kayo'y issues karoon nga, like what you've said ganina, based on our data, pinakababa ang edad na nagagamit og drugs is 14, 15 years old. And those are the ages within, sa mga nagaskwela karoon, labina sa ato ang public schools. So I would like to ask for your support, sir, together with the City Anti-Drug Abuse Council, kung pwede magsugod na'ta as soon as possible sa pagconduct og symposiums per school, sir, and if possible, mangayu pod mi og proper kanang process or flowchart na'to, unsa'ong na'to pag-address kung naatay drug problem sa school. Kung sample si PTA, si Prefect of Discipline, or si tanud ba na diadto na ay ma-identifying nga, na ay involved nga minor with this, unsa'ng na'to ang proper turnover and everything. So I will be visiting your office as well, and mangayu may proper flowchart, anak, para makabaluta kung unsa'ong na'to pag-address. Dilig ingon nga pag makakita si principal nga, uy, na ay nagmariwan na drey sa likod sa eskwelahan, para instinct tatanan kung unsa'ong na'to pag-address ang drug problem for a drug-free school, sir. Kay again, uh, mauna ang isa sa agenda sa ato ang New City Mayor, sir, appeal ang pagprevent na sa ato ang education system. And with that, sir, since, okay, mangkasatong collaboration, I would like to thank you in advance, and we will have more future collaborations with our schools. And mangulit yugko, sir, mangulit yugko sa inyong matag opisina, ako ang pinakakulit nga Konsihal Daria. You will expect me there, pasailuan na lang ko daan, but I want our drug problems labina sa atong mga eskwelahan, labina sa atong kabataan nga masulbad yun ni sir, dagan kayang salamat, sir.
Excuse me, ma'am. Is that in line sa program ni, ni Kada, ma'am, na mag-start sa 21?
Thank you, Honorable Campos. Thank you, sir. Are there any more questions from the members? So if there are none, uh, sir, uh, salamat kayo sa imong panahon karoon. Thank you for answering all our questions, thank you for the time that you extended us today. Uh, we wish you well. Uh, just a short note, um, since we will be reviewing the 2026 budget soon, mga concerns ninyo, I assume every year na'y subsidiang city government and provincial government sa PIDEA, tama po ba? If, uh, if it's in cash or kind? So when we review the 2026 budget, just like the sentiments of Honorable Antupwesto, kung nagasupport ba ang lying agencies sa, sa PIDEA, kung city government or provincial government nagahatag pa't budget, these are the questions we should ask when we review the 2026 budget sa Atong Nbat Meeting. Sir, uh, good luck po, we are here to coordinate with you, uh, anytime you need us. So, um, if there are no more questions, I'd like to invite you to the session, uh, in front, for a quick photo opportunity, kaoban ang inyong grupo, sir, thank you. A few minutes recess is de, wait, before a few minutes recess is declared, I'd like to relinquish my seat to Honorable Rabat Gaita, na ako'y, uh, courtesy call sa baba with the Mindenaw Development Authority. Uh, if there are no objections, tar, ikaw na lang magrecess, derye.
Dagang salamat, sir.
Few minutes recess is declared.
Thank you. Sir, thank you, huh?
Please settle down, as we are still under recess. Session resume. Again, madayaw na hapon sa tanan. And again, to our guests here this afternoon, again, madayaw na hapon and welcome to our regular session. So, we are now under privilege R, I believe, Mr. Secretary.
Yes, Madam Chair.
May I request first, our Honorable Antupwesto, to please introduce us as well to our guests this afternoon?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and to our SB Secretary, and...
Um, before our Honorable Antupwesto will continue, we are still under suspension of House rule. May I request Honorable Campos for the lifting of the suspended House rules?
Madam Chair, to give way to the request of the Honorable Antupwesto, I would like to have a motion for the House rules to be reinstated, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So there's a motion by Honorable Campos for the lifting of the House rules. Any member to second her motion, seconded by Honorable Pablo, and all members present, hearing no objections. Um, House rules are now resumed. Please continue, Honorable Antupwesto.
Thank you, ma'am, uh, Madam Chair. Good afternoon sa lahat, sa SB Secretary. As a Chairman on the Committee on Cooperatives and Livelihood, I have manifested last regular session to invite the officers of three association. The One, Libudon, Shanghai, Danau Drivers' Operators Association, with its president, Mr. Ulises Arnaiz, the Magricom Tricycle Driver Association Operators, with its president, Mr. Neri, Nerius Pabri, and the King Cooperative, Multipurpose Cooperative, represented by their interim Chief Executive Officer, Mr. Romeo Sabino, who applied for accreditation with the LGU City of Mati, and of us to recognize them and given an assurance that each council, city, or the each city council will give full support to the civil society of the organization. At the same time, before I call the name of our guests or invited, no? And also I have a manifestation, Mr. Chair or Madam Chair, this representation would like to appeal to this August body for the, for the consideration regarding the proposed resolution, later F, requesting the Honorable City Mayor for the release of the honorarium of MCCDC Council members, and later G, requesting for the financial assistance for the, uh, office of the City Mayor intended for the cooperative month celebration, to be discussed under the unassigned business suspended House rules.
Thank you, Honorable Antupwesto. Honorable Pablo, you are now recognized.
Honorable Presiding Officer, Officer, point of order. It's not the time, ang yagibasa, is not the time for the manifestation of another, uh, another business?
Since we are, uh, we just resumed our, um, House rules, um, what is the pleasure of the body, Honorable Campos, as a chairperson of the House rules? Is our Honorable Antupwesto, um, still allowed to manifest her, his, his, um, resolutions?
Honorable Presiding, President?
Yes, Honorable Pablo.
Correct me if I'm wrong. This is a, uh, uh, what I meant is the...
The proposed resolutions?
Oh, in, in, proposal, uh, report and observation. I think it's not the time of, uh, report and observation. The Presiding Officer will not ask from the Secretary, if there, what is the next item?
Madam Chair, a few moments recess, Madam Chair. Few minutes recess is declared. The members.
Resumed.
So claro na'to, no? Thank you. So session resumed. Please continue, Honorable Antupwesto, for your manifestation.
Yes, after you heard my manifestation, since our guest today is a very busy personalities, no? So may I call the attendance of these participants so that after this pwede na silang madismiss na'to, your honor, para manginabuhin na po sa... What's the purpose here? Because nag-apply man mo o accreditation, munang ina-kung nga, I want to know you, kinsumani sila, para as soon as do night time nga, magkahimamatya. Yun lang ang purpose, walay purpose to interrogate anybody's because you are encouraging, your cooperative was encouraged by the government to be accredited. So you are here, comply everything, but ano lang gusto namo nga, we have a close relation among the council, no? And usalangka suggestion, especially sa TDA. I have observed, sa mga TDA, 'yung i-review ninyo ang inyong mga consignation and bylaws, kasi we accredited diito, the Drivers Association will in fact, 'yung mga driver, walang lisensya, 'yung mga operator, walang franchise, how could we become illegal? Operators and Drivers Association will in fact, wala kayong driver's license. So may mga bylaws dito ha, kailangan nating i-amend ninyo next time. But for now, i-addition na lang natin next time sa atong... This is not the time na matulungan natin ang government in terms of 'yung mga DAKO, DAKO. Dito sa level ninyo, ma-assist na ninyo, kinsay walay registro, kinsay walay mga driver's license. By the use of that, so malaking tulong talaga ang TDA. So yun ang importante na mag-usap tayo for that. But this time, walang harang. We will try our best na talagang mapasa ang resolution, nga ma-acredit ang atong mga applicant associations sa TDA, and especially sa King Co-op also. So i-recognize na lang na'to, Mr. Chair, Ma'am Chair.
Go ahead, Honorable Antupwesto.
Tawag na'to first, ang King Multi-Purpose Cooperative, Ma'am Clarice Lumente. We have Florence Pasha from King Cooperative. And we have also from the One, Libudon Shanghai Drivers Association, Juseline Galvez, the secretary, the Ulises Arnaiz, the president, Leo Diario, the Board of Directors, Ricardo Lobiano, Vice President, Denis Gracia, Cleopie Maugat, Bernaby Quiroga, and Melvin Palme. Are you here? And last, the Magricom. Magricom, we have Elmer Anthony Buenda Junior. Yes, and we have Marius Pabry, the president, Eldon Malion, the BOD, then Ruel Rodjan, treasurer, Rolando Panting Junior, Jonathan Moreno, and Rolando Matingal Senior and Ando Paul. Madam Chair, this is the group of officer who are present today, expended their time. But this time, I think after this, wala na sila 'yung obligasyon sa ato.
Noted on that, Honorable Antupwesto. So based on your manifestation, if it's amenable with all the members of this council, maybe we can invite our guests here on the floor for a quick photo opportunity before pwede sila mo exit and to also go ahead with their kabalukmi, bisimukaroon. And we thank you for your time and your effort in coming here. And rest assured, the commitment of our Honorable Antupwesto in tackling the reaccreditation of your different organization here in our council. So few minutes recess is hereby declared. So maybe first, we can call on... Session resumed. To recap the manifestation of Honorable Antupwesto, he requested the proposed Resolution F and proposed Resolution G be tackled and discussed under unassigned business under suspended house rules. So we are still under privilege R. Is it right, Mr. Secretary?
For reading and refer...
We are still under privilege R. So is there any member here in the council would like to use of this privilege R? First, I would like to recognize Honorable Campos, followed by Honorable Rabat, followed by Honorable Pang and Honorable Alcantara.
Madam Chair, I have here a proposed resolution and a proposed ordinance. I would like to manifest, Madam Chair, that this be included in the Order of Business and for the proposed resolution to be tackled under unassigned business and suspended house rules, Madam Chair.
Noted on that, Honorable Campos. Is this about the immediate implementation of the deployment?
Yes, Madam Chair.
To be included in today's Order of Business?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Noted on that. And this will be tackled and discussed under unassigned business under suspended house rules?
And the ordinance as well to be included in the Order of Business only?
Ordinance number 646, series of 2025. This is for the first reading, inclusion in the Order of Business. Noted on that, Honorable Campos. Please take note of the request, manifestation of Honorable Campos, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Madam Chair.
Honorable Rabat, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First and foremost, I would like to pass a resolution alongside my dearest counselor, Honorable Tara Rabat Gayta, subject to style, Resolution honoring and commending Balangay City High Performing Arts for their exemplary performance and by bringing honor to the City of Mati for being grand champions at the Indak-Indak Sa Kadayawan Open Category and winning Best in Music and Best in Street Dance during the Kadayawan Festival 2025.
Thank you, Honorable Rabat. Thank you for that.
And as well, I would like to commend the following. The choreographer, Jason Alas. Assistant choreographers, Francis Cellerinos and Sir Edsel Monderondo. Music coordinator, Kenneth Babiera. Music director, Nor Onofre. And school principal, Jovelin El Barba. And as well, the 79 dancers, 40 musicians, 32 propsmen, and seven coordinators, for a total of 157 participants.
Noted on that, Honorable Rabat.
And I would like to also manifest that I have three proposed resolutions. Resolution B, C, and D. And if it's okay with our August body, I would like to be, I would like to discuss them under unassigned business and suspended house rules.
Thank you, Honorable Rabat. Just to recap, we have one proposed resolution to be included in our Order of Business and proposed resolution B, C, and E be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules?
B, C, and D.
B, C, and D.
Yes.
Thank you, Honorable Rabat. Please take note of the request of Honorable Rabat, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Madam Chair.
If not, Honorable Pang, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May hapon sa tanan. This representation would like to ask permission from the August body that the following communication through not certified urgent, but needs an appropriate legislative action. There are three communications, Madam Chair. First, Communication Number 26, 2025, regarding the pre-reviewed Sangguniang Kabataan Annual Budget for calendar year 2025 of Barangay Mayo. Number two, Communication Number 32, 2025, regarding the pre-reviewed Sangguniang Kabataan Annual Budget 2025 for Barangay Bubon and Sangguniang Kabataan Supplemental Budget Number One, calendar year 2025 of Barangay Lawigan. Lastly, Communication Number 34, 2025, regarding the letter from our City Mayor, Honorable Joel Mayo Z. Almario, dated August 7, addressed to the Honorable Members of the Sangguniang Panggungsood through Honorable Lorenzo Leon G. Rabat, requesting for a passage of a resolution authorizing the City Mayor to enter into an amendment to the existing memorandum of agreement between the City Government of Mati and the Land Bank of the Philippines relative to the Salary Loan Program for Employees. All this communication, Madam Chair, to be discussed under unassigned business under suspended house rules.
Thank you, Honorable Pang. So there is a request by Honorable Pang for three communications. Communication Number 26, 32, and 34 to be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules. Please take note of the request of Honorable Pang, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Honorable Alcantara, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In this relation to Resolution Letter A into this Order of Business, this representation would like to manifest that this resolution will be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules, Madam Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Alcantara. So there's a request for your resolution to be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules. Please take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there any members who wish to make use of this privilege R? Honorable Campos, you are now recognized.
Madam Chair, due to the time constraint and medyo late na din ang oras, if there are no objections, I would like to request that our secretary to the Sangguniang will just read the referrals and proposed measures just the heading and not every detail to fast-track our session, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Campos. There is a request by Honorable Campos that we summarize the reading of the communications relative to our Order of Business, only the titles and which committee it is referred to. If there are no more manifestations, what is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
For proposed ordinance, we have two measures, Madam Chair. Letter A authored by Honorable Jose Paolo Luis Pirabat, City Ordinance Number 645, since 2025, an ordinance prohibiting drug racing of motorized vehicles on national and provincial roads and local streets within the City of Mati and providing penalties for violations thereof, referred to the proponent. Proposed Ordinance B authored by Honorable Campos, an ordinance strengthening curfew regulations for minors from 10:00 PM to 4:00 AM in the City of Mati through inter-agency interventions, referred to the proponent. For proposed resolution, Resolution A authored by Honorable Alcantara, strongly and favorably supporting Senate Bill Number 2494, or an act providing for magna carta to tricycle drivers and operators, referred to the Honorable Alcantara, and it will be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. Proposed resolution B authored by Honorable Antupwesto, pertaining to the reaccreditation of pre-civil society organizations to be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. Proposed Resolution C by Honorable Paolo Rabat as proponent, requesting the authorized agent corporation of Philippine Charity Sweepstakes Office operating small-town lottery in the City of Mati to formally inform and furnish a Sangguniang Panggungsood Committee on Games and Amusement of all newly established and existing ESL outlets within the City indicating their exact location and relevant permits to be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. Proposed Resolution D by Honorable Paolo Rabat, this will be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules, adapting the ILG Memorandum Circular Number 2025-082, prohibition against accessing online gambling platforms. Proposed Resolution E by Honorable Antupwesto, earnestly requesting the Honorable City Mayor Joel Mayo Z. Almario to allow the release of honorarium of the members of Mati City Cooperative Development Council covering period from January to July 2025. This will be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. Proposed Resolution F authored by Honorable Antupwesto to be discussed under assigned business, earnestly requesting financial assistance from Honorable Joel Mayo Z. Almario, City Mayor, in the amount of 300,000 pesos intended for the conduct of the Cooperative Month Celebration on October 1 to 31, 2025. And last, proposed resolution, Madam Chair, a resolution honoring and commending Balangay City High Performing Arts for their exemplary performance and by bringing honor to the City of Mati for winning the Indak-Indak Sa Kadayawan Open Category during the Kadayawan Festival 2025. Main proponent, Honorable Tara Marie Rabat Gayta, and co-proponent, Honorable Paolo Rabat. This will be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. And for communications and messages... Communication Number Twenty-Six, referred to the Honorable Pang, Chairman of Corporate Finance, pertaining to pre-reviewed Sangguniang Kabataan Annual Budget for Calendar Twenty-Twenty-Five of Barangay Mayo, to be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. Communication Number Twenty-Seven, various civil society organizations requesting for accreditation and re-accreditation, referred to the Honorable Antopesto, Chairman of Committee on Cooperative. Communication Number Twenty-Eight, referred to the Honorable Antopesto, Chairman of Committee on Agrarian Reform Cooperative and Livelihood, requesting for re-accreditation of Mati National Comprehensive High School Toda. Communication Number Twenty-Nine, referred to the Honorable Antopesto, requesting for re-accreditation of Di Del Toda. Communication Number Thirty, same referred to the Honorable Antopesto, Chairman of Committee on Cooperative, requesting for accreditation of Mata Nangka Sadat Transport Service Federation, Mati City. Communication Number Thirty-One, referred to the Honorable Antopesto, Chairman of Committee on Cooperative, requesting for re-accreditation of IBC Toda. Communication Number Thirty-Two, referred to the Honorable Pang, Chairman of Corporate Finance, to be discussed under unassigned business pertaining to Sangguniang Kabataan Pre- reviewed Annual Budget of Barangay Bubun and SK Supplemental Budget Number One of Barangay Lawigan. Communication Number Thirty-Three, this is for the information of the Honorable SP Members pertaining to Executive Order Number Zero-Zero-Nine, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five from Honorable Joel Mayo Z. Almario, Subject Matter Reconstituting the Primary's Orientation and Counseling Team. Communication Number Thirty-Four, referred to the Honorable Pang, Chairman of Corporate Finance, pertaining to the letter of our Local Chief Executive, Honorable Mayor May Almario, for authorizing the City Mayor to enter into an amendment to the existing memorandum of agreement between the City Government of Mati and the Land Bank of the Philippines relative to Salary Loan Program for Employees, to be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. Communication Number Thirty-Five, referred to Honorable Antopesto, regarding re-accreditation of Dumobco. Communication Number Thirty-Six, same referred to Honorable Antopesto, requesting for re-accreditation of Mabadua Organization. Communication Number Thirty-Seven, letter from the school head of Magum Elementary School, referred to the Honorable Sena Campus, Chairman of Committee on Education, pertaining to the request for a passage of a resolution supporting the special patent application of Magum Elementary School. Communication Number Thirty-Eight, referred to the Honorable Antopesto, request for re-accreditation of the MT Toda. Communication Number Thirty-Nine, referred to the Honorable Antopesto, requesting for the accreditation of MCP Toda. Communication Number Forty, referred to the Honorable Antopesto, requesting for re-accreditation of DSL Toda. And last, Communication, Communication Forty-One, same referred to the Honorable Antopesto, requesting for re-accreditation of Disamahan Kontakrimen at the Busadong Police Sakap. That's all for communications, Madam Chair. For Committee Report, Committee Report Number Zero-Six, Series Twenty-Twenty-Five, by the Honorable Antopesto, Committee Chairman, Committee on Good Government, Public Ethics, and Accountabilities.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. We are now under Committee Reports. Honorable Antopesto, you are now recognized for Committee Report Number Six and Committee Report Number Seven.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Committee Report Number Zero-Six dash two, dash Twenty-Twenty-Five. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I believe every member has a copy of this Committee Report Number Zero-Six, Twenty-Twenty-Five, filed by the Committee on Good Governance of Government, Public Ethics, and Accountabilities for Administrative Case Number Zero-One, Administrative Case Number Zero-Two, all Series of Two Thousand Twenty-Five. I now move for the adoption, Madam Chair, of this Committee Report. I do so move.
Thank you, Honorable Antopesto. So there is a motion by Honorable Antopesto for the adoption of Committee Report Number Six, filed by the Committee on Good Government, Public Ethics, and Accountabilities. Any member to second this motion, seconded by Honorable Bardon and all members present. Any objections, discussions, hearing none. Committee Report Number Six, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five is hereby adopted. Please proceed, Honorable Antopesto.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. This representation would like to render a Committee Report Number Zero-Seven, Dash Twenty-Twenty-Five, filed by the Committee on Cooperatives and Livelihood. This regarding the re-accreditation of three association. I believe, Madam Chair, Officer, all members were given also a copy of this said Committee Report. Now, I move for the adoption of the Committee Report Number Zero-Seven, Twenty-Twenty-Five. I do so move.
Thank you, Honorable Antopesto. So there is a motion by Honorable Antopesto for the adoption of Committee Report Number Seven, filed by the Committee on Cooperative and Livelihood. Any member to second his motion, seconded by Honorable Bardon and all members present. Any objections, discussions, hearing none. Committee Report Number Seven is hereby adopted. Thank you, Honorable Antopesto. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
For calendar business, non-finish business, business ready for second reading, product of Committee Report Number Zero-Seven, a proposed resolution to be authored by Honorable Antopesto.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Honorable Antopesto, you are still recognized.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. In behalf of the Committee on the Cooperative and Livelihood, I would like to move for a passage of a resolution approving the application for a re-accreditation of the Wan-Libudon Shanghai Danau Drivers and Operators Association, Magrikom Tricycle Drivers and Operators Association, and the King Multipurpose Cooperative. I do so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Antopesto. So there is a motion by Honorable Antopesto for a passage of a resolution for the re-accreditation of the Wan-Libudon Shanghai Danau Drivers and Operators Association, Magrikom Tricycle Drivers and Operators Association, and the King Multipurpose Cooperative. Any member to second this motion, seconded by Honorable Alcantara and all members present. Any objections, discussions, hearing none. The motion is hereby carried.
Thank you.
What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
No proposed ordinance for second reading for unassigned business, subject for the suspension of house rules.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. So we are now under unassigned business. My request, Honorable Campos, for the conversion of this body and at the same time for the suspension of the house rules.
Madam Chair, I move for the suspension of the house rules and for this August body to be converted into a committee of the whole, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Campos. So there is a motion for the conversion of this August body to a committee as a whole and at the same time for the suspension of the house rules. Any member to second her motion, seconded by Honorable Dayang Hirang and all members present. Any objections, discussions, hearing none. We are now under committee as a whole and house rules are now suspended. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
The manifestation of Honorable Antopesto for the proposed measures, Resolution E and F.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Honorable Antopesto, you are now recognized for proposed resolutions F and G.
Yes, again, thank you very much, Madam Chair. My request for the chair na lam sam lam poang.
Yes, you can do a lam sam discussion of these two proposed draft resolutions.
Okay. The floor is now open for any discussion for Resolution Letter F, a resolution earnestly requesting the Honorable City Mayor Joel Z. Almario to allow the release of honorarium of the members of the City Cooperative Development Council covering the period of January to July two thousand five. And Resolution Letter G, a resolution respectfully requesting for the financial assistance from the Honorable Mayor May Almario, City Mayor of Mati, amounting to three hundred thousand pesos intended for the conduct of the Cooperative Month Celebration on October one up to thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Honorable Antopesto. The floor is now open for any questions or discussions pertaining to the two proposed draft resolutions as just stated by Honorable Antopesto. If they are none, please proceed, Honorable Antopesto.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole, recommendation regarding the two proposed resolution as presented a while ago. I do so move.
Thank you, Honorable Antopesto. So there is a motion by Honorable Antopesto for a passage, for the adoption of the two draft resolution for the committee as a whole, recommendation. Honorable Campos, yes.
Madam Chair, can we request a few movements, recesses, Madam Chair?
Okay, a few missed recesses is now declared. Yes. Yes, Honorable Pang.
No answer, Mr. Chair, because there was no question presented.
Thank you. Um, sa DILG memorandum, the barangay tanods coordinate directly with DEP Ed. And DEP Ed will be assigning their tasking. So depending upon sa DEP Ed school, what time they will report. On sa mga main functions nila, although there are four functions suggested by the DILG memorandum for the tanods when they report at the school. Honorable Bordon.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sa DILG memorandum, the barangay tanods coordinate directly with DEP Ed. And DEP Ed will be assigning their tasking. So depending upon sa DEP Ed school, what time they will report. On sa mga main functions nila, although there are four functions suggested by the DILG memorandum for the tanods when they report at the school. Honorable Bordon.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Dilini objection, na ako alang baklaro sa proponent na pilaka school ang ibin barangay sintralang pilaka school. Kaya basino dilip paigo ang atong tanods, kaya every barangay is only 20 barangay tanods. So butangan na to ugduha kada is pilahan. So basino dilip paigo ang tanods din, every day na sila magduty. So unsan alay panginabuhian sa tanods, kung wala po't ay matatagin sa ilahan na insakto na incentives or honorarium.
Thank you, Honorable Bordon. Honorable Campos, do you wish to respond to the statements?
Mr. Chair, actually, it is a very valid question, Mr. Chair, for our local implementation of this DILG memorandum circular. However, this is a mandate from the DILG in support of our president's directive to ensure the safety of our students. However, very valid din ang question mo, sir, because the barangay is also mandated by our local government code to have only 20 tanods. If that's okay, um, Mr. Chair, we will be serving this memorandum circular. And that's the time wherein the barangay and the DILG and the DEP Ed will closely coordinate. Because first and foremost, they haven't established a meeting yet because wala pa sila nakareceive sa memorandum circular. And the purpose of this resolution is to urge the urgent implementation of this and to start the collaboration and the meeting, and then we will discuss there po. Kung ano ang assignment natin, ilan per school ang makaya, and what is the capacity of our barangay. And if hindi talaga kaya ang capacity ng barangay to provide in every school, then I think it is the prerogative of the barangay to submit a report or a request to our DILG from the region to have further explanation on how to cater other schools that are capable ang barangay to provide with tanods, Mr. Chair. However, I'd like to reiterate that this resolution is just to support the urgent implementation and the urgent serving of this memorandum circular to our public schools and to our barangays, Mr. Chair, para masugdan na ang coordination. Because how do we know kung unsang mga problema that entails with this pag wala pa nasugdan ang collaboration to begin with?
Thank you, Honorable Campos. Do you have any follow-up questions, Honorable Bordon?
Okay, ah, siguro. Ah, okay, Kayos. Thank you for that, ah, golden idea. Tungod kay usagin ni siya ang magkataagob siguridad sa atong mga estudyante and to support the memorandum from DILG. But I suggest na, ah, siguro, unyan na get siguro na to i-implement kung ma-realize na po na to tong BPATs na atong idugang in every purox. So siguro kana makitir na get na to ang kana na mga proposals na mga one sa atong in every school na butangan ginato of mga BPATs kaya pwede naman na to sila i-rotation, na dilin na every day na maka-duty. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Bordon. Do you want to make a statement?
Furthermore, Mr. Chair, if it's also okay with the Honorable Bordon, kasi very valid naman talaga ang complaint ni Honorable Bordon as a chairman of peace, public safety, and security dito sa city, no? If it's okay with the Honorable Bordon, we will coordinate also with the DEP Ed and your committee as well in facilitating this with our punong barangays. For now, this resolution only is to serve the memorandum circular and for the implementation. And if ever there are concerns, I would like to support your suggestion, and we will have a committee hearing or public hearing together with all the barangay chairmans that are involved with this, so we can draft the proper complaint to our DILG from the region. Honorable Bordon, thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from the members? If there are none, please proceed, Honorable Campos.
If there are no further questions, Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation, Mr. Chair. For this proposed resolution, I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the proposed resolution. Do any members second her motion? Seconded by Honorable Pabio. Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Honorable Rabat Gaeta is recognized. Honorable Rabat is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, Mr. Chair, with the permission of the body, um, can we do a lump sum discussion of these four resolutions?
It's all relating to the small-town lottery, is that correct?
Yes, uh, resolution B, C, D, and the resolution that was...
B, C, and D. Please proceed.
Yes. So, the floor is now open for any discussions referring to um, resolution B, C, D, and the proposed resolution honoring and commending Malangay City High Performing Arts for their exemplary performance and by bringing honor to the city of Mati for winning the Indak-Indak sa Kadayawan Open category during the Kadayawan Festival 2025.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding the proposed resolutions presented by Honorable Rabat. Are there any discussions? None? Please proceed.
I move for the adoption of committee as a whole recommendation of these proposed resolutions.
Thank you. There is a motion for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for three?
Three resolutions.
Four resolutions as presented by Honorable Rabat. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Valera. Hearing no objections, these motions are carried. Thank you. Honorable Rabat Gaeta is recognized. Uh, okay, okay. Honorable Pang is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The floor is now open for discussion of the communication number 26 and 32 series of 2025, all SK annual budget, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding communication 26 and 32 as presented by Honorable Pang. Are there any?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation as requested in communication number 26 and 32, series of 2025. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for two communications. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Hearing no objections, this motion is carried. Please proceed.
Mr. Chair, the floor is now open for the discussion of communication number 34 series of 2025 regarding the salary loan program for employees.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding communication 34 as presented by Honorable Pang. Are there any discussions? If there are none, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation as requested in communication number 34, series of 2025. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the said communication. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Masagnay. Hearing no objections, this motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Alcantara is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The floor is now open for any discussion with regards our resolution, uh, proposed resolution A. A resolution strongly and febrally supporting this Senate Bill Number 2494 or an act providing for the Magna Carta of tricycle drivers and operators institutionalizing mechanism for its implementation and for other purposes.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding proposed resolution A presented by Honorable Rabat. Are there any discussions? None? Please proceed.
I move for the adoption of committee as a whole recommendation of these proposed resolutions.
Thank you. There is a motion for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for three?
Three resolutions.
Four resolutions as presented by Honorable Rabat. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Valera. Hearing no objections, these motions are carried. Thank you. Honorable Rabat Gaeta is recognized. Uh, okay, okay. Honorable Pang is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The floor is now open for discussion of the communication number 26 and 32 series of 2025, all SK annual budget, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding communication 26 and 32 as presented by Honorable Pang. Are there any? If there are no discussions, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation as requested in communication number 26 and 32, series of 2025. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for two communications. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Hearing no objections, this motion is carried. Please proceed.
Mr. Chair, the floor is now open for the discussion of communication number 34 series of 2025 regarding the salary loan program for employees.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding communication 34 as presented by Honorable Pang. Are there any discussions? If there are none, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation as requested in communication number 34, series of 2025. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the said communication. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Masagnay. Hearing no objections, this motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Alcantara is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The floor is now open for any discussion with regards our resolution, uh, proposed resolution A. A resolution strongly and febrally supporting this Senate Bill Number 2494 or an act providing for the Magna Carta of tricycle drivers and operators institutionalizing mechanism for its implementation and for other purposes.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding proposed resolution A presented by Honorable Alcantara. If there are no discussions, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, before I pass the adoption, Mr. Chair, this Magna Carta of tricycle drivers and operator will be ensure the rights of the members of the tricycle sectors shall be respected at all times. This bill will further promote the interest of the tricycle sectors by providing uniform rules and regulation for the issuance of permits for the operation or operation of tricycles and regulated fees. Mr. Chair, I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation for the passage of said resolution, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the proposed resolution presented by Honorable Alcantara. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Valera. Hearing no objections, this motion is carried. I think we are done with all requested communications and resolutions to be discussed under a committee as a whole. Honorable Campos is recognized.
Mr. Chair, I move that this August body be converted back into plenary.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the conversion of this body back into plenary, seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, we are now back into plenary. And Honorable Campos is still recognized.
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of a resolution supporting the immediate implementation of the deployment of barangay tanods in Department of Education Schools in the city of Mati, Mr. Chair. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the passage of our resolution. Do any members second her motion? Seconded by Honorable Bordon. Hearing no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Rabat is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the permission of the body, can I do a lump sum passage?
Yes, please proceed. Just read all the resolutions, please. The title of the resolution.
I move for the passage of a resolution encouraging...
A resolution encouraging all registered civil society organizations, CSOs, in the City of Mati to pursue city accreditation in accordance with the DLG Memorandum Circular Number 2025-060 and strengthening partnerships for inclusive and participatory governance. And resolution... A resolution requesting the authorized agent corporation AAC of the Philippine Charity Sweepstakes Office, PCSO, operating small-town lottery STL in the City of Mati to formally inform and furnish the Sangguni and Panlunsod Committee on Games and Amusement of all newly established and existing STL outlets within the city indicating their exact locations and relevant permits. Resolution D, resolution adopting DLG Memorandum Circular Number 2025-082, prohibition against accessing online gambling platforms and/or engaging in online gambling among DLG personnel and local government officials and employees, thereby directing its immediate and full implementation in the City of Mati to preserve the integrity, discipline, and moral fiber of public service. And the last resolution... A resolution congratulating and commending Malangay City High Performing Arts for their exemplary performance and by bringing honor to the City of Mati for winning the Indak-Indak sa Kadayawan Opening Category during the Kadayawan Festival 2025. I do so move.
Thank you. There's a motion by the Hon. Rabat for the passage of the following resolutions as he just stated. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Hon. Rabat Gaita and Hon. Alcántara. Are there any objections? Hearing none, these motions are all carried. Thank you. Hon. Pang is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With your permission, shall I have a lump sum passage of the said resolution?
Thank you. Just please read the title of all resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have four resolution, Mr. Chair. The first three are all SK budgets, while the fourth one was for the Salary Loan Program for Employees. Mr. Chair, I now move for the passage and approval of the four resolution. I do so move.
Thank you. There's a motion by the Hon. Pang for the passage of four resolutions, three SK budgets, one salary loan. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Hon. Campos, Hon. Sebelino. Are there any objections? Hearing none, these motions are all carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hon. Alcántara is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, now move for the passage of a resolution, a resolution strongly and favorably supporting the Senate Bill Number 2494 for an act providing for a Magna Carta of tricycle drivers and operators, institutionalizing mechanism for its implementing and for other purposes. Mr. Chair, I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There's a motion by the Hon. Alcántara for a passage of a resolution. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Hon. Valera. Hearing no objections, this motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We are still under suspended house rules. Hon. Campos is recognized.
Mr. Chair, I move that the house rules be restated, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There's a motion by the Hon. Campos for the lifting of the suspended house rule. Seconded by all. If there are no objections, suspended house rules are now lifted. What's the next item, Mr. Secretary?
Announcement, other matters.
Thank you. Are there any announcements, other matters? Pwede to mag-short meeting, all of us council after this. One minute lang, dery lang sa session floor sa mga following activities para same page ta sa mga protocols and unofficial protocols. Hon. Pabio, announcement.
Thank you, Hon. Presiding Officer. As a Chairman of the Committee on Infrastructure of the eighth City Council, I received a report from City Engineering Office, particularly one project of the City Government implemented by 2024. So, I heard the report, project inspection number one of the City Engineering inspected last August 15, 2025, particularly the project completion of the CSWD office building. Mr. Presiding Officer, the amount of this is 9,989,684.91 and project started December 26, 2024, target date of completion on September 21. So, the engineering itself, we have twelve findings. First findings, no proper drainage of water waste on the flooring at the mail comfort room. Second floor due to improperly labeled floor tiles and floor drain. Only one. So, dinal na kubasahon ang twelve kabok, but the Chairman on the Infrastructure, I want to invite these winning bidders on the next session, the nominal construction and suply, Hon. Presiding Officer, on the next session.
Thank you. If there are no objections from the members, please put it in writing and submit a letter to my office so that we can course that letter through them. Thank you. Next session.
Next regular session.
Thank you, Hon. Pabio. Are there any more announcements, other matters? If there are none, please proceed to the next item.
Adjournment, Father Begrifting Prayer by the Robol Dayang Hirang.
Thank you. Hon. Dayang Hirang is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I now move for the adjournment of our regular session. I so move.
Thank you. There's a motion by the Hon. Dayang Hirang for the adjournment of today's session, seconded by all the members. Session is adjourned. Please rise for the closing prayer.
Let us bow our heads and put ourselves in the holy presence of God in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Our dearest God, as we end today's session, we want to give honor to you and offer everything for the glory of your name. Thank you for the time we had today to discuss important matters to be able to make appropriate decisions. May you bless each one of us who took the time to be here today. Bless our... With your holy protection throughout the rest of the day and every day. Help us to make our work even more fruitful and let it be all for your glory. Help us to do our part to come up with the best results for our city. This with us in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
One minute lang, one minute, one minute.